New faces, but for anyone who doesn't know, on Friday mornings, we have an opportunity to take a topic and do a deep dive, which is unusual, as you know from yesterday, with everything really fast-paced and just all the talks are quick. This one, we really get to think about. So, we picked the topic this year of describing voices. And I was motivated to explore this topic, actually, after attending a workshop that Stenterns did last year at this Voice Foundation on mapping voices. I think there's a real paradigm shift in how we can describe voices. And so I wanted to explore that a little bit. But at the same time, we have to work with clinical reality and workload and time constraints. And so this session addresses these types of issues. There we go. So, I am the one, you know, been around a long time. It's actually the 40th anniversary of my master's degree graduation. And so, I was thinking, you know, I like to give a little historical perspective. But so when I was in grad school, I wrote a paper on, like, how do you describe breathiness? And how do you describe harshness? So, 1983, I wrote this paper. And it took me to some literature that was from the 60s, including this figure, which is a paper from Ishiki Yagihara Marmoto, 1966. And they proposed four types of harshness that were differentiated primarily based on severity. And the two things they looked at were the periodicity or ap periodicity of the fundamental frequency, as well as the noise components, and came up with these four types. So, already, you know, scientists were thinking about, we've got this perceptual thing, we need to categorize it, and then we need to quantify it. And so they went right to acoustics using spectrographs. Obviously, not computers at that time. They were just starting using computers to do this work. But these days, we have sophisticated computer algorithms and software packages. And we can analyze sounds in complex and elegant ways. And yet clinically... So, oops, my slide, I'm sorry. Move my slide forward. This is just a fun picture, because these guys are going to talk about really cool pictures. So I just threw a sound wave up there. But clinically, we still cling to univariate observations and reporting. At least, I do. We measure and report fundamental frequency and intensity, harmonic to noise ratio, jitter, shimmer. And if we're really fancy, capstral peak prominence. And that's kind of where clinics sort of sits these days. But scientists have also said, "Well, that doesn't work to just take one variable at a time. So let's put together indices and take a group of variables, and then make those make sense." What is dysphonia? Such as the dysphonia severity index from Woods and Allt, 2000. That takes several different kinds of tasks. Your highest pitch, your quietest loudness, your longest phonation, and then jitter from about. There's the capstral spectral index of dysphonia by Awan, 2011 was that first report, using a variety of capstral and spectral indices. There's the Acoustic Voice Quality Index by Barstey and colleagues. And the Acoustic Breathiness Index, which takes even more different variables and weights them and does regression analyses and figures out what this one thing might be. There's some wonderful new work on pitch height and pitch strength to characterize voice signals, including strain and overall dysphonia. They use capstral measures and spectral measures as well. So, lots of interesting ways of thinking about doing these analyses. And I neglected to mention by Anand and Edson. So thank you for your brilliant work. So there's a lot of really nice progress about it. So those are some acoustic harlots. And of course, all of this is trying to say what's actually happening at the level of physiology. Can we figure out which subsystem these various sounds are coming from? And can we maybe even distinguish which disorder it is? Way back in that Ishiki paper I showed you, they claimed that if you listen and quantify various parts of voice, you can tell if it's a particular lesion versus another, whether it's a functional problem or a lesion. That has not borne out, but that was the plan way back when, to try to figure out what's happening with our voices. So, we obviously can't diagnose lesions. I will not leave you with that thought. Don't take a picture of that slide and think it's true. Now, the other thing we should consider, and this is not something necessarily planned into this morning, but there's some wonderful writing by Jody Kryman and others about the gap between the physical sound and the role of the listener. We have to think about the listener as well. Walmart described this as a temporal abyss, that there's a gap between the physical sounds and the perceived quality. And what's happening here is though acoustics may capture the sound itself, it fails to bring in the experience of the listener. You know, what are their cultural and personality and whatever attributes they bring to the situation that affect the way listeners feel about the sound that they hear? So, these are just some thoughts for you about describing voices. This is obviously a huge topic. So selecting speakers was difficult, but I think we have a really nice slate of speakers. The one thing we do know for sure is that voices are really variable. So this is my slide about variety. We know that human body can produce complex sounds. And when combined with an equally complex listening partner, you get a voice that sometimes is recognizable. If you hear a voice, you're like, "Oh, I know that person," or "I know that singer." Maybe you say, "Oh, I know that voice disorder," although we know that's not valid. But you would maybe hear, "There is a voice problem." And so, all of these things are wrapped into the voice. We all know this. And we're going to think today about how to describe them in new ways that you may not have thought of before. So, we have a wonderful sleeve of scientists and clinicians who have spent their careers working on solutions to such options. So this is the program for the morning. And let me just take a minute to tell you how it works. We're going to have three speakers before the coffee break. So our first speaker will be Peter Pavon. He's talking about variability in the voice. Because coming up with a title was a challenge. And just how do you describe the voice as well? They're different. So we'll talk about that. And then we'll have Stenterns from talk about more differences in voice mapping. Christian Herbst talking about the language used by singers and scientists and how we can come together. There's then a coffee break. And I want to encourage you to go visit the exhibitors and network and talk to people. But please make sure that you are back at 10:10. You'll hear the chimes to come back, because you don't want to miss the talk by Kathy Nagel talking about how clinicians are trying to do this and there are five minutes or less that they have in the clinic. And then wrapping up the program by Mikey Barkman Bowser, who will talk about pulling together the acoustics and perception from a clinical perspective. So that's how it works. We don't take questions typically after each talk. So please keep notes of the questions you have, because at the end, there's a whole hour. This is a real luxury in a meeting like this, to have an hour to have a real discussion and ask the questions that you want to ask then. Now, if speakers do finish early, there could be time for a question or two, but it's not typical. So keep your thoughts, write them down, and we'll have a lovely discussion at the end. So, that said, I would like to take a little more time to introduce our first speaker. So our first speaker is Peter Pavon. He's an acoustician and teacher of sonology from the Netherlands. He's a longtime attendee and contributor to the Voice Foundation symposium. He retired last year from the Royal Conservatory of the Hague. So congratulations on that. His very first research project, around the same time I got my master's, actually, was in Amsterdam on the objective recording of voice quality. And then he continued to study biochemistry, signal processing, and sonology at Ulster University. I tried that again. Where he has worked as a teacher and researcher on the singing voice and analyzing that and looking at acoustics. In 2002, he founded Voice Quality Systems, which is a company that developed the voice quality recording system called Voice Profiler. And then he went back to school and got his PhD at the KTH Royal Institute of Technology in Stockholm. So I'm honored to invite Dr. Pavon to an lecture and to share with us his theories and his research about describing the voice using novel acoustic methods. His talk, as I said before, is the map undeniably shows voices are different. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you for inviting me to speak. Let's go to the first slide. What you see in front of you is a voice range profile. And it's manually recorded. What it shows are how loud you can sing a different chosen pitch or fundamental frequencies. These are connected as a top line called the top contour. And there's the bottom, how soft you can sing. Val R for that pitch. And when you connect this all, you have the voice range profile or the contour of the voice range profile. And can we tell from the contour what voice it is? What kind of voice it is? Name. Can we recognize the individual from the contour?
No.
Absolutely. Yes, you can. So it says something about the function of the voice. What? Or what's the process that led to this contour? Okay. You recognize this? Does this contour give you any information of the landscape within? No. Here it is. Christian made this beautiful slide. Thank you, Christian. We want to know what the landscape is of voice. That's what we want to do with voice mapping. So we have an idea. So, next question. Is it democracy or are the laws the same for all?
No.
I thought this is one. This is the best answer. Some voices are more equal than other voices. It's a fake reality. Maybe the voice production mechanism is largely the same for all of us, but at the moment, the models are not sophisticated enough to explain all things that we observe. Especially with the voice mapping, we go for the extremes, out of the norm. And when doing voice mapping, you often collect evidence of vocal output that cannot be properly explained with the source filter model. So it's better to assume from the start that the source filter model has a limited jurisdiction in your land or state. Can I get a general map of the voice to start? That would be a problem. What would be the problem? Voices are extremely different. This is, nothing method is always shown. But there must be some general elements, right? We all have these general elements. I just took one of the voice maps. There's always an area linked to mechanism one, motor register. There's always a second voice, which is the mechanism two. And here, they are nicely separated in the recording. And there is a capital of the whole state, which is the speech range. And what we have is this rim, which goes, which is not always clearly visible, but you find it. Especially, it shows better in ECG measurements. STEM will show examples where it shows up. And it seems that it's a sort of northwestern wind blowing all the time. And that is because when you go up in pitch, you stretch the vocal force, but you also have more resistance. So we have to push louder. The voice gets louder. Or you want to go louder, you have to stretch more. And then the pitch goes up. So there's always this co-variational interest there. How do I get my own? Upper size developed with a B. Can I rely? Rely, come on. Can I rely and navigate on it? That's the goal. How do I interpret colors, lines, and symbols? Now, with an interactive recording system, just move around with your voice. That's the thing. A localizing principle will be active that will reveal what you local quality send it is. It's like filling in your own studio. Someone else is another problem and solution. So it's not that we all have the same map. And the other question is, you can ask me later, come on. Can I see the landscape of my voice? Has changed at some points. Ah, that's a good question. Yes, in great detail. That is the main reason why having an individual map is so valuable to compare to later. So I have here this one for you. Yeah. It's to me not that informative, but it's your map. Oh, it's it, yeah? Okay. So if you reckon, then you have to wait for the next. Where can I read about it? Where, when any scientist exploring this in land, listeners grow and more and more people become experts. Please join. Important events in 1981. According to the New York Times, it's Reagan takes the oath as president and it's the birth of voice mapping. Did see my colleague, former colleague from the Institute of Phrenetic, Greg Gert, his name is Greg Bloedhoof. That's how you pronounce it in Dutch. And he presented at the conference of the UEP a first computerized device for voice profile registration. And this is, let's say, not one of his maps, but couldn't get correct match from him. It's one, the first one I made with his setup. This is the setup. I entered this field as a pilot study, objective recording of voice quality granted by the Dutch Preventivels. It was actually for one year, but I got it for two years, half time. And the goal was augment the voice range profile with one parameter that measures the roughness or for sharpness, the one for betterness. That was the message. And this is the heritage, technical heritage, describing the setup, which is a PDP1110 computer. That's an enormous thing taking half the room. And here, you see the screen. Actually, this screen is a memory scope. And it's seated in a large and echoic chamber where no singer wanted to sing. I recorded one and two, and then the word got so wrong, no singer, the subject. Then there is this one, which is worth noticing. There's this thing that says pitch. Pitch picker? Is it pitch detector? It is the pitch detector. All the setups don't measure pitch. Not a lot, they don't look for it. Task of this thing is to report me the next point in a waveform that can be associated with a new vocal closure ring. That's the thing. So what you have is a device with multiple which are running. Who has the best guess of the periodicity? Probably it's the one which shows the lowest jitter. So you ask all these pickers, which one has the lowest jitter? Do the pitch. So you don't search for it, you find it in it. And that's a great principle, because it works with all sorts of mathematical forces too, which are not that periodic. And you have also this option to immediately connect the information to the pitch period, which is most important in the whole field. So Reagan is still there, signing with Gorbachev, 1988. My first map. What do you see? I have seen very strange screen. It's better on yours. Because it's... This is the value. First, this is the jitter in the F0 as a measure for roughness. The jitter is... If a scent, dark is very low jitter. So dark is low jitter, very periodic. Light color is very morge jitter. And you see that along the bottom, there is a lot of irregularity. And if you go louder, it decreases. There's a gap between the motor and falsetto, and one and two. And this is, we had no idea at the time, is this coming? There was no reference. Everyone's also, when I showed this or when it was presented at the conference, people were flabbergasted. A voice has more than one jitter value. That never really, great. But no one thought, okay, was it me? How does it work? It took years before we found solences. So here, we see a spectral slope, which is actually very close to the spectral balance. I know now, okay, this is... These two were extremely correct already from the start. We had no idea. And this is called vocal noise level, above 5 kilohertz. And it says, "High frequency noise." But it's just high frequencies above 5 kilohertz. It's not noise. Yeah, it's spectrum. It's too... Ah, we had the last one to prove concept. Come on. Now, what we've... This is what went on in the same time. This old recording device has completely error. All the things were solid, solid. Also by me, by hand. It was a terrible thing. Always broke down. So I wanted to have a digital version. I was waiting for a signal processor faster. With me, you see it. This is the audio signal processor based on a TMS 2010. STEM knows it. This is the EOPilot modules. I made the ATD converter. There is a pilot system. So I was completely in it. But all for one purpose, to get new results. There's also a half-filtering with slots for memory expansion. Words need to reach the 1 megabyte needed for storing FFT spectral percent. So I was already far ahead in my thinking, but the hardware is... So here we have the... How much time? No? Okay. Here you see the final result. It's already 1991. Already gone with the professor Paul who I studied with. I first saw this article when I was in Sweden, visiting STEM for the first time, I think. And then it said, "Oh, the paper is out." I said, "I didn't know that." And here you see the results. There's now two metrics which are worth zero. It's for two subjects. The left one is subject C. The right one is subject D. And look first at the scales. Here it says crisp factor. Have you heard about a crisp factor? You didn't. People at the time had no idea. But it's actually a very simple time domain metric that measures if the waveform is a sine wave or if the waveform is having peaks and sharp peaks. Then it's often the resonances of the vocal cich, which are common in the waveform. So you have a very clear measure which tells you if the whole thing is sinusoidal and then the color is light or when there's more higher harmonics, when the signal becomes quite complex and it's dark. So it's a very easy one to do that. And here is the jitter again. That is your target. You always want to have a good jitter measure. It goes from 0.1 to 5 to about 2%. Yes. So now, dark means there's a lot of jitter. Light means it's becoming regular. And we still had no idea what the reference was, because you take so much time to be sure that you get what you want. We noticed one something. There's always a jump. So if you go up, suddenly, whoop, you go up. And there's higher harmonics. And at the same time, there is a lot of irregularity still. And then suddenly, irregularity is called. That happens with all voices. There seems to be certain line here. And it's actually strange. You go louder with your voice and then whoop. You get a push, yeah? Every new phonation, the vocal falls and go into a self-fulfilling prophecy. They vibrate. Oh, I'm sinusoidal. But hey, once we have, gives themselves a bigger blouse. That's the sound, yeah? Always. And so it's a mode where, let's say, it gives itself an action. If you go softer, it will go on. Doing this mode, so there's hysteries. You can go to a lower level and go still close. And suddenly, it will be sinusoidal. You don't see that it's a graph, but you notice it while doing. And therefore, this real-time feedback is enormously important to you. 25 minutes, okay? Now. Not to drive to go too far. This line, as I said, is much more visible in Stanis pictures or in his maps or graphs. I don't know what I should say here. There, it will be the EGG signal, which is becoming more irregular because there's just more noise in the signal. It's not the noise of the voice, but the noise of the signal which you measure. But you see the comparable line also. And it's always something that you have as a reference. But the strange thing is, this line you see in the EGG when there's a first contacting is not the same height. The harmonics, the higher frequencies, which excite, which are a sign of excitation of vocal cich later, at a higher... There's all sorts of details which matter. You can check this line also. It's definitely linked up to warming up of the voice. So there's a lot of things to study yet. It's important to tell or to set the onset to the register. So if you want to control which register you want to record, you have to know where to find it. That is, it's important to have an idea what's happening. Then there's another thing to mention. And it will show here. This is more or less for these voices where the speech ranges. So this speech range is always covering this line. So every new phonation starts, your speech is going through this range, back and forth. And it's also jumping in this, let's say, let's do it mode. And so that's happening. But it's also where the voice is most variable. It's where the most variation is in all the metrics. It's also the range where there's the most information. So if you have a null net, you can say four or five sentences. It already knew who it is, because it can reproduce your voice quality with a different tone. It's the speech range which is the most informative, but also the most variable. So now, I'm going to do a shift. This one, here. And I will show you, hopefully, if you're ready. Maps.[1589.14] Maps. Okay. These come from latest study on voice maps. And it shows you in green to red the level of the rest of the spectrum compared to the level of the fundamental. And it does almost the same thing. It's the scientific Chris Factor. And there is green when it's more sinusoidal and it's red when there's more higher harmonics. These are all different voices, untrained females, 1, 2, 3, 4. And the left ones, it's only mechanism 1 and it's M2 at the background. And you can see how incredibly different these are. Look at this one here. These two registered areas are completely separated. And here they are overlapping for a large part. You have no idea. You cannot predict this at the beginning. There's a huge difference. Yep? The things, first at the beginning, you look at these nice intervals. But this is what is real issue. And they reach, some reach very much high energy, low power. Some are not even getting in their neighborhood like this one. But it's neat there. Some reach the same power with a totally different spectral slope. Yep? So that's what you see. And you can also see this for the map 2, falsetto head. And so there are some voices like this one and this one here and this one that have certainly areas where the fundamental is not the strongest component. So you can never say in M2 or in falsetto, fundamental was always the strongest component. There is largely between individuals. There's so much rules which you read now or you heard about. Forget about them. The generality is not in. Forget about the generality. Okay. So, and then there's trained females. You can find the maps. You've seen already with the trained voices. There's also large differences. And then there's the trained voice, which is in the high registers, which can show all sorts of weird things, like these kinds of things, which later I'll find out where it comes from, but still have no explanation for. This is trained males, which even, I didn't have a large selection, but if you can do 10 more, then you will find 10 different. So that's the message. Now I have to snap out of this. Come on. Okay. There we go. No! I don't want this. I want... Where is it? Yep. I've done this? The maps are very different. But there seems to be some general tendency, right? You saw some. They're very different. So what you should listen to? You want to have some idea what's happening? Generalization? Did work? I worry. I have this condition. It's called normality. It's a form, it's a progressive commission that I've developed over the years. Say, Peter, you should average your words to derive a general picture and learn to compare to a... I hear a bit of rain. And I'm not joking. Stan will say, "It's right." So what, after years of work, to make it possible to arrive at very detailed reproducible recordings of the specific qualities of individual voices? I've no time to say this. You now suggest me to throw everything in a blank. Are you nuts? Yeah? It's a treasure. Don't start blending it. Don't average. Everything, read. Yeah? I can read it for you. Takes a lot of time. You only need to ask, "What will the average maps of the USA and Canada look like when put on top of each other?" Yeah? Useless. That's useless. No. I will go on. Professor lost the time. How much time do you have approximately?
18 minutes.
I'm thinking. I'm thinking. I'm going. This is to me a more difficult part. I prepared this part last night. I have to have a better link to make this work. I thought, well, I've heard David on Wednesday expressing this thought, which is everywhere. We need to have better, more sharp parameters, the better line that they perceived counter. It seems a totally valid thought. Yeah? There is some... There you go. It's, the thought is valid, but maybe I can, I see it difficult. So let's try to explain it to you. This is my thought. This is my teacher, Tom Templehouse, from his sonology. No one knows him, but he was my mentor. And I thought, this is a lot of the bad question. The primary function of the ear organ is a warning function. That's how his book started. I copied it to my notes. So I, this was one of the first things I taught in all the lessons to all students. Start, the primary function of the ear organ is a warning function. And in electronic music, this is a very important statement because everyone wants to have sliding scales, warms, between sounds to her knobs and then hear a range coming up. But no. It says, qualitative perception has one top priority. Classify. Yeah? There is maybe no continuum. That's the message. And this classification is at least a dual struggle. There's always a percept of a contextual identity with a sound identity. You never hear a sound identity without a context. So if there is a speaker you're close by, you hear my voice. My speaker, it's speaker context. And then it's not the room, but the speaker where you hear my voice. Let's say another example. You want to measure breathiness? Breathiness. Breathiness, that's a sound identity, but it's always in a contextual identity. The contextual identity is default. If you need to find the same acoustical metric, you can do it. Or you could be a flute with a little... It's different. So it's always one with the other. And it can be a multiple layered identity. So it's always this, there's always this thing, this question which you're... There's an autopilot in here. Here you're a micellar. And so I say, "Do the two fit? Does the sound fit the context and the vice versa?" If not, our autopilot wants, wakes the captain, gets the... "Ah, ah, 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 ah." "The fast and silent..." "The fast and silent..." Okay. There is, something is happening. Yeah? That's, these two are, there's always this intern play between the sound identity and the contextual identity and the context sphere. Contextual identity is way to your whole perception, what you know about the room and so forth. So when you hear a sound and it's in the hallway, something is falling in the hallway, you hear it as, "Oh, it's over there." So anything which is an alarm also has an identity. That's the primary function of the ear organ is a warning function. How does this relate to voice? Then I shift identity and say, "Okay, this is a voice map from one individual. Actually, it's a series of voice map maps that are all different. Several quality aspects. And if you have a lot of quality aspects, you can resynthesize this voice." As you can say, "Okay, synthesize the voice from the description." That's then I want to do the hearing. So therefore, I agree. And what you do when you record is you actually just go around with your voice. But the metrics stay within their context because they don't look at the final, always, "Is this intensity? Is this..." "Rush and corner." So what do you do if you work? You separate, you run to this space where you say more speak. And what you actually see is time-stamped dynamic context contained. It's a word that I may not use. And I think that's the best description. No idea. And now, what you do, what do you do when you connect to a perceptual square? You're actually listening to the voice sample and you connect it perceptually. Breathiness to something on the square. You have no real idea how you're selecting it. Ah, okay. So that's perception of the individual, of the unappointed square. You have no real push to it. Now, you have quality parameters in a capsule of the components. So something you think, "Ah, that would be good for..." Breathiness, breathiness, a little bit of accent. And what you hope, what you do is you pick some sample somewhere on this grid. You assume this voice, I think, a characteristic sample at this point. No way it's characteristic. What you think, that it is? And if you underwrite it, you will have an appointed square. Now you have a perception scale. You have a quality parameter scale. And what you hope for, you think, sound identity is directly related to perception. Perception is directly linking to this. That's what you should, that's the aim. You want to have better quality parameters, you have more... But you forget about always this context distribution. It's always there. This is what's happening. You have a perception scale somewhere separate from a dynamic context. You have a quality parameter which is separate from the context. And the real connection is within the grid. So if it is separate from the same point, it's going away. If you forget about the individual distribution, it won't work. So don't think target connections. That is the, so take this out of the simplistic model. It's nice to have all this statistical, which you cannot avoid. Let's say, the thing which you see as venomous, but which is actually a very important attribute, which takes... Now, how much time do I have left?
10 minutes.
Okay. Now, I thought I need to tell the data about voice. I saw that it's... 10 minutes. It's released, you have to train. It's my synthesizer system. And it's actually the fifth generation voice profile recording system. The spectral browsing was released in 2005. In 2003, already, it stored the spectra for all users. So everyone who'd record with this system would evidently have the spectral recording with a lot of view. I did training courses, basic use, interpretation course. Didn't took anything from RY, who was a speech therapist. Been at the school, all SLP schools in Maryland. Became part of their training program. I taught all the students at University of Ohio, first direction course. Made the conservatives, major postdoc, and eventually practice, research groups. Only 10 clients exclusively wanted the spectrums. The rest, they're cooking. Is this too cold to go in? It's using a special direct human mind and sound, which is... And also the sound part, which I had to develop halfway the thing because all sorts of hard problems. And then I was forced to do a rapid development to get it done. So I decided to do sound part. It comes with factory install, SPL configuration. And explicitly, no norms are supplied with this to the source. You know, it's normal. First line of the menu says, "The main part of this method will show if you re-record after some intervention. The first recording you make for an individual is always the learning experience and in many cases, the start of training or training. Be sure that you can rely on the laws that you persist about for the same process, protomore, the first time. Otherwise, you can't go ahead." It probably reminds me of something itself, an energy. I'm always interested. What makes the quality of the individual voice? Why is my voice different from yours? What, what is actually, all those voices, the sizes, all this? You can immediately know it is a forward synthesizer because all forward synthesizers, all, you always have the same, at the same factory install. Thinking, you don't know how to tune it to make it sound like you were in America. So you want to tell them this. And I knew, I never met, it's almost impossible to do my voice for my voice within my own forward synthesizer, build many, in every words. So some, not, not even. So now what I want to do is demonstrate some of the viewing and mental analysis options within the spectral area. And don't forget, show me this synthesis option. Okay. I have different break systems, give more break system. I don't know this. So now we're back in the original system. No, this is... This is another one. Start. We need to start. With this one. Now it should be the next piece sounds. This here. So now we're all in the speaker. And I start the old software. I'm in larger. I looked at one of the members of... The data, I take 10 more register. No, it's attitude, it's falsetto train fee number 1. Open it. Put this one in the back. Put it in the back. Then file, open another one. I take number 10, also mechanism 2. And these have almost the same error. So I will take 2 ones which are maybe comparable for the area we're there. And then there's all these options. You can look at the density, how much time you were at a certain point during recording. There's the jitter. And you see ah, when you think soft, there's some jitter and frizz. This is fairly normal. Fairly normal music. Ah, jitter, ah, it's here, too. Though other vocal voices, there's ah, jitter, yeah? So these numbers are all this high for the person. I'm sorry. Push it. Now, it's Chris Factor. Here it is. What, actually, what I want to do to show is the spectrum which is there. The spectrum of a cell. That's it. So now I have to do something beyond pointing the mouse. And I set it to watch texture in this way. And I have, this is a linear square. This is a normalizing square. This is a normalized spectrum. It's in 2 curves, one for the front data for one subject, which is 103, number 10. And 103, number 1 is the background. So you can compare two voices in the same cell. What's the difference between the two? All these things together. And you can now, and say, "Okay, I go louder." And this is what happens. But it's much better if you go to an absolute scale, really reach 250 degree. And now, you see both coming and increasing. And I can take another pitch. Yep? And you see somewhere, one of the others, something you started with a single form. Oh, there is a single form thing. There is a single form? No, spectral form, single form, SF. So now there is an estimator, it's twice estimator, single form, characterize. If you can get it out of parameter. So here you see the 2 affect change. This was, there's a lot of trial here. There's a ball of eurosin, which is trying to estimate the bit you see over here. The bit is called the beautiful fossa. And something that is there, the single form. It should be there. It's an absolute scale. No, that's getting there. Okay, here you see the difference. There's the slope of 3 kilohertz, which you can see here because there is more like a separate thing. What you can learn is that there is another one, spectral square. It's in the role concept. Don't read, don't use. It's not one of the real voices it does. It's one of the role concepts in all our thinking and thoughts. Forget about it. Forget about it! No one knows, forget about it. It's really, there's the centroid in the lower part. There's a, there are derivatives. There's also the best derivative of children's abilities. There's a harmonic integral, which is important because if you do this, switch off this one. Ah, where is it? So let's clear again. No! Okay, go on. Try again. And if I was here. Run. Always the next, for the middle. There are 3 minutes. Okay. I don't want to turn it back. Actually, here is, they're also making large, file, open. They can change to number 1. And say, this way, reset this control. Okay. Take every synthesized or synthesized. And I have to set up. Let's give it some vibration. You're working it out? SPL is constant over time. You only hear the change in the voice quality you need to have it present rather. All the ways constantly. Stop here, otherwise we go too far. And go back to this one. Here it is. We can demonstrate this. Read this paper, what you want to do more on, what else do the metrics show? And how well, or not well, the source filters or not well fit? Forget about it. Voice. The fact of some intervention training can be assessed with large precision and detail and linked to a specific vocal setting that you can navigate back to. So you can perfectly find what went wrong and where. You can use this in terror. One representative sample is an illusion. An undersampling pro to elicitation noise. That's what you have. The distribution holds the better part of the information. So it's not this one sample you always have taken account of the distribution. It's the better part for the perceptual and the physical expression of the quality of the voice. Voice mapping lets us see how diverse and different individual voices are, how limited our models are and how in or valid our interpretations and generalizations might be. With voice mapping, you sentence yourself to a lifelong journey of collecting valuable, hard-to-generate generalized markings. And you make actual analogy. And thank you, Dr. Christian Hirsch, for giving me the lantern and helping me find the words and structure.
...voice. And if we look at that, that line looks very similar to what we just had. So what's going on? And, oh, I'm sorry, I should be standing like this. Or I should be polite. Most of you see them there, so I should be pointing this way. And I should be using the laser pointer over there. It's a bit tricky, though. Okay. So what's going on? Well, let's look at the electroglottogram, the EGG. We can do three EGG metrics with this system. And here, green means that the peak deg is at its minimum. And I can't go into the details of that here. But when this is green, there is no vocal fold contact. And when it is not green, there is some vocal fold contact. And if we now put that line there, we say, aha, that's what was causing it. And in 2010, when Peter came and talked about this line going through the middle, we set out to try to figure out what that was. And part of it has to do with this vocal fold contacting. And another part has to do with what Peter was saying earlier. Okay. Now, what does this look like in breathy? No, sorry, that's still normal. But this is the contact quotient. This is the EGG metric that you've probably heard most about. And as we can see here, that blue means a low contact quotient. So that's small in medium phonation or vocal fold contacting is just setting. And it increases as we go loud with some variation in that direction. Now, what's down here is pointless because there is no contact. So the contact quotient is not defined. Or it depends on how you choose to define it. So we can safely ignore the stuff down there. And again, if we draw that line, we can see that it is very irrelevant. We can also look at the stability, or rather instability, of the EGG waveform. And it looks like this. If we put in the little line there, we can see that it's most unstable when there is no contacting. And then there's a transition region here where the vocal folds are kind of finding a regular pattern. And when we're above this level, it's very stable. And the EGG pulses don't change very much from one pulse to the next. And that's measured with something I call the cycle rate sample entropy. Okay. We can do this. All these metrics are available. The question is, what do we do with them? Okay. If we now superimpose that transition line, you can see that it is relevant in most of these. For instance, the contact quotient, the peak deg. This is a combo of those two, which goes to zero when there's no contacting. And it's pragmatically useful. This is the harmonic richness factor of EGG. We'll skip that. There's the entropy. Here's the spectrum balance. And this is what Peter was talking about. That the big change in spectrum balance doesn't happen here. It happens a bit higher up. And that's a mystery that we will dwell on later. In the crest factor, we don't see much effect. Sorry. Let's go back. We don't see much effect for some reason. Don't know. Okay. And here's the CVP, which is less dramatic, but it does have a steep increase right where the vocal fold contacting sets in. And like Peter, I will now superimpose a typical speech range. And you'll notice, as he pointed out, that in this transition zone is part of the speech range normally. So that means that you get a huge amount of variation even in this relatively small part of the voice range. And that is very important. Right. Because how can we make this thing to be relevant? Well, actually, we heard a little bit about that. Phonetics talk about phonation types, and so do clinicians. So let's see what we can do. We can characterize different phonation types, such as breathy, normal, pressed, by combinations of metrics. And so in this system, we can also display the waveform. We can press somewhere in the map and hear the sounds at that point, which is very nice. Okay. So I press here, and I decide that... And what the system does then is it goes through all the layers and picks the values of the metrics at that point. So we get what looks like an MdB thing here. And I say, okay, that sounds like very loud. Almost, you could call it hard phonation. Then I move down here and click. And it gives us a slightly different thing that we might call firm phonation. And so on. Let's press about there. And that gives us another type of phonation. And I click down here in the transition region. And now you see all these metrics are coming down, except the entropy, which is increasing. And finally, we can go to the non-contacting part, which is down there. Okay. And in the non-contacting region, the entropy is high. The contact quotient is 0.5. The peak deg is at its minimum. The CVP is smaller, and the crest factor is also very small. So now we have a sort of a set of descriptors for different types of phonation that we have picked manually by listening in the map. That's one way of doing it. The system can also produce these categorizations automatically by clustering. But this is more intuitive. So now let's use these five types and classify that recording that he made in normal phonation. And that gives us a map of phonation types. So down here, we have the no contact. Then there's a transition into contact and some loose phonation, firm and hard. Those terms are just things that I dreamt up. It's up to you as clinicians to choose the terms you really want and type them into the program. And it will do the classification in the way you want, hopefully. And again, we see this little line, which indicates the onset of vocal fold contacting. And if we now take the same classification and apply it to the breathy production, we can see that the non-contacting region has increased in size and the transition region has increased in size. And it never gets into the firm or hard phonation at all. So this is perhaps a more intuitive way of classifying what's going on, which combines values from, in this case, six metrics. That's another future research topic. Which metrics should we use? Which are the most effective? Lots of work to be done there. If you don't like... I've been working, had the pleasure of hosting Sylvia Capobianco in Stockholm over the winter. And her hunch is that clinically, we probably won't need five categories. It might do well just to scale this down to three. In which case, you could actually enter the number three there, and the system will generate three clusters instead. So this is sort of phonation types, which I believe is a good way of making a connection between all the acoustic and other metrics to something that is more relevant for the pedagogue or the clinician. Now, can we use this to assess something? So let's have a look. The next slide will show a case study, an in-office procedure of unilateral injection of the ringoplasty. It's a male speaker of Swedish. And he read The North Wind and The Sun. He read the weekdays, counted one to 10. And this is total about two and a half minutes of running speech. We're not talking now about doing, oh, it's just reading. And this same task were done pre-intervention and then directly post-intervention. Thanks to Dr. Gunnar Björk and Sylvia Capobianco that we did this in the past spring. So now, the funny thing is, we can take the categories that we got from the back term and apply them to this pathological voice. And we can see that this is a very different picture. It turns out he has sort of three islands of phonation here. You can see that one around 100 Hz, another around 200, and then there's some sort of creaky down here. And it's all more or less no contacting as compared to what Barry Turner was doing. Okay. We give him the injection and ask him to do the same thing again. And now, there's a huge change. I mean, obviously, we can see the pitch has gone up to around 200. So he was trying to find his way with his new voice. But the creakiness is gone. And you can see that it's no longer only in the no contacting. It's also some of the transition or even some of the loose phonation, if that is all the terms we would choose to use. And how could... Making a difference map of clusters is not obvious, how you do that. So I made a difference map of the index of contacting instead. And what we see now is it's only possible to get a difference map when you have overlap between the precondition and the postcondition. And of course, in a treatment such as this, there might not be very much overlap. So what we get is this. But all of that overlap shows that there is more contacting post the treatment. And if we went through the other layers here, we would see other differences in those other metrics. And in this case, it indicates that the treatment was, in some sense, successful. But it's important, when you do this, to try to get pre-post overlap so that you structure your protocol so that it becomes likely that the person will phonate at the same FL and the same SPL, pre and post, if possible. If it's not possible, then that's another clear outcome, obviously. Okay. Here's another one. Experimental phonetics. How does phonation change when you tilt the speaker? And this has relevance because we often put people into MRI machines lying down and this sort of thing. So Helena Angst did her master thesis, and it will be reported next week at the phonetic meeting in Stockholm. She recorded eight participants in three positions, upright, supine, and ten degrees backwards, we. And the task was to read standard texts of two to three minutes total duration. So again, we don't need to have sustained vowels or anything. We can just talk, and the system can deal with that. And she collected audio, EGG, and respiratory data. So I've used MATLAB to clean up the plots a little bit, but all this data is from that same program, phonetic. So going from upright to supine, what do we see in the contact quotient? Well, we can see that in the lower part of the voice range, the contact quotient has actually increased quite considerably. And the difference map shows that we have this contiguous green area, which tells us that the contact quotient has increased when the person was lying down. However, at high pitch, it has actually decreased. And so this is very typical. You think you have a clear effect, but it's always going to be something different is going to happen in different parts of the voice range. And this is not even the voice range. This is the speech range, because this was running text. But the effect is very clear. But how do you assess it? Because if you take the average of all of those, you're not telling the truth, are you? Because you'll get some plus and some minus. So it's difficult to simplify the data more than this. Okay. What happens if you go from upright to inverted, which is her term for ten degrees backwards? Well, we get the same effect. These two are the same. This is upright to supine. This is upright to inverted. But we get more of the effect, as you can see. There's more increase in contact quotient and less decrease. So that makes sense. And if we compare supine to inverted, that's a rather small change from zero to minus 10 degrees. And so we see that there's not that much change. But in fact, we get more contact quotient in the inverted position in the high voice. So that gives us something to think about. How do we explain that? Let's do the same thing for another person and looking at the CPP. So upright to supine, we get a decrease in the CPP. So the phonation is either more breathy or less regular when lying down. Not much. It's only one dB average difference across this speech range here. But it's there, and it's very clear. Thank you. And upright to inverted, similar. Not as much. Let's move on. And supine to inverted. So the point here is that if we were to measure only on one vowel or a few vowels, we would get a lot of noise. But when we see the whole map like this, we can be fairly confident that there is an effect. Now, this is a very important thing. I hope I can take a minute or two to talk about it. So what happens when you ask someone to do comfortable, loud, and soft on a sustained vowel? And they do it. And then a week later, they come back and you ask them to do the same thing. So this is not our data. This is from Bob Hillman. I think Michael will be talking more about this. So this is what they did on the first occasion, and this is what they did on the second occasion. Soft. So here we have a person who does 70 dB on the first occasion and less than 60 dB on the second occasion for the same elicitation. That's completely bonkers. And you can see there's a lot of overlap between soft and medium and loud. And there are many, quite a few instances of loud being softer than comfortable and this sort of general mess. Could we click back, jump back to the slide? There we go. Thank you. Let's see what happened here. Now, the average difference between first and second session was about 4 dB. What happens if you move 4 dB up and down here? A lot can happen, right? You need to stop. Okay. So let's jump back. Thank you. Let's go. And the same chaos for pitch changes. So summary. Different maps allow pre-post comparisons because they do it at matched FL and SPL. Here's a teaser of the alternative color scale. Difference maps eliminate elicitation noise in SPL and FNO because there's this overlap. But we must still control for other things, like if we're doing it on a vowel, they have to stay on the vowel and so on. Now, this is really interesting. Values of metrics are often less important than how they change. It doesn't matter if the CPP is 18 dB or 22 dB or 16 dB. The interesting thing is whether it has changed across the intervention. So and there is what we like to call the common sense test for statistical significance. The difference map should not be noisy, and it should have connected regions with the same color. This is different from clinical relevance. So we have to learn for these metrics. The doctor knows best test for clinically relevant effect sizes. Lots of work to be done there. Okay. And in intervention, often there's different effects across the speech range. The vocal fold contacting threshold affects a lot of things. And clustering can promise to increase the clinical relevance of voice measurements. And there we are.
Thank you. Good to cut off anybody. Their work is so brilliant. But we will have time to talk more later. And now, right before the coffee break, we have one more speaker. I'll give a little shorter intro. So we have Dr. Christian Herbst coming. He's a voice scientist and singing voice pedagogue from Salzburg. His master's is in classic voice pedagogy from Salzburg, and his PhD is in biophysics from the Czech Republic. So you can see why Christian is the perfect singer and scientist to talk to us today. His work focuses on singing physiology and the physics of voice production in mammals. And so his talk today is "Singers and Scientists Unite: Speaking a Common Language."
Thank you, Nancy. Thanks to the Voice Foundation for having me. So this is my 12th time in person here. I've always given data-driven empirical data papers. Today, I stand here, does this work? No. This is the button, right? Okay. So as some of you, and Nancy has mentioned this, I have first life as singing teacher, voice pedagogue. I've taught several thousand singing lessons. And I got interested into how the voice works. So I... And I cannot compare myself with an Indian deity. So I feel more like this double-headed ogre here. And this is sometimes confusing, and sometimes it helps. So we're switching gears here. This is a little summary of my talk. Feel free to use this quote in your next faculty meeting if you want. So I'll be talking about something that I'm sure many people have already written about, many clever people. And if I don't mention them, it's not negligence. And it's not disrespect. I apologize. If you feel or think that I have overlooked some bodies, some citation, please come up to me and please tell them, because I'm eager to learn about this myself. This is an adventure for me. I was kind of, when Nancy proposed this title, I thought, okay, let's do it. And then I thought, okay, what have I gotten myself into? Because terminology is a mess. And it has been a mess for 100 years. And it has been a documented mess for 100 years, as Shannon Coates says in her brilliant thesis. But then she also says, a higher level of consistent terminology used among voice teachers than what has presently assumed is already in place. So more systemization is no longer warranted. Which means, hey, that's great news. We can have an early coffee break. But maybe there is still some confusion. And Hock and Sandege advocate for vocabulary free of disciplinary bias. And there are efforts of some groups to get towards a common terminology to describe the voice. And Rattik and Ekholm, they paint a more positive picture, but still, they show with their statistical data that singing teachers like to agree more with themselves than with others, at least in that study. Walstrom and all, this is a shout out for Katie Nagels' talk also. They show that there are differences in KV ratings between singers and SLPs. And of course, this depends on the background and the training. And in the study that we have done, we looked at curricula from English-speaking universities and looked for terms to describe voice evaluation. And we looked at 307 universities total, and only a fifth of them provided online information about this. And we found 292 different terms in 64 sources. After lexically grouping this, we ended up with 114 different terms, officially used academic terms to describe singing voices. From tone, which occurred pretty often, to gems like buoyancy. So please describe the buoyancy of a voice. I have no idea what that is. Here you have a little smorgasbord of terms. Tone, breathing, musicality, technique, diction, accuracy, intonation, rhythm, and so on. So some sound familiar, some don't. So I am not going to tell you for sure. I'm certainly not going to tell you what the terminology should be. And I'm also acknowledging, or I wouldn't say that, we still have a mess. But if there would be some issues with terminology, I'm asking the question, what would be the reasons for that? And my axiom for this presentation is that there are different modus operandi of operation between or amongst pedagogues and scientists. We live in different worlds. So you see the double-headed ogre now talking to himself, or to you, of course. So and there are different facades. And this is a very old graph. It's a speech chain from Dennis and Pinson, 1973. And they identify an acoustics layer. And of course, there is then transmission and perception cognition in the reception, in the listener, and there is voice production. And that involves cognition, neurology, physiology, and the physics. And what many people have been concentrating on is the acoustics. Myself as well. I've done voice acoustics for 20 years now. And to my great shock, when putting this talk together, I realized the acoustics is the least important part from a voice teacher's point of view. We're interested in how does it sound? And how can we make it? How can we make the singer produce those sounds? So nevertheless, acoustics is one factor in the chain, and it's non-negotiable. It exists just as physics. You cannot just bypass it. So it's a mess. So we are teaching to sing for an audience and not for a sound pressure level meter. I'm briefly trying to demonstrate this. So if I go, "Ooh," or I go, "Ooh," which one is louder? Second one. Which one is stronger? First one has 6 dB more. So which means, at least for this example, intensity measurements are useless. They don't tell us a lot. And so we have to hear our thinking towards the end point, which is the listener, which is the audience. They are paying for this. Or gotta talk badly about it, depending on... So and I like this because this is scientific writing. And of course, it's a joke. It's a joke about the drunk who is looking for his keys under the light of the street lamp. And the policeman walks up to him and asks, what are you doing? Yeah, I'm looking for my car keys. I lost them over there, 10 meters over there. So why are you looking under the street lamp? Yeah, because the light is better here. And in a way, this is what we're doing in science. We are looking at the acoustics because they are objective. They are easy to measure. And everything else, the further we get away along that speech chain from the acoustics, the more complicated it will become. So in a way, the acoustics and a bit of physics and physiology, and of course, there have been fabulous papers trying to bridge these gaps. And I want to acknowledge all of these in a shout out here. But mainly, it's acoustics and a bit of physiology and everything else is still hitting. This is an exaggeration, forgive me, but I hope I can make a point. It reminds us a little bit of the question work by Beinow and others. So from the point of view, from a singing teacher, this is a paper, David May, and we have recently published in the Journal of Singing. So we have voice production, the physics. It's aerodynamics and mechanics and acoustics. There are interactions. This is caused by physiology. So what do we do with our anatomy? How do we move? And there is neural control, and there is cognitive control. And this all first has to pass a perceptual layer in the singer. Because the singer, the student, is getting some instructions from the teacher. So there already has to happen some mapping. It's another type of voice mapping, if you will. So this is the voice production system. And we call it the student, or in other terms, aka the black box. Because we cannot directly influence it. The input has always has to come from the outside. And then there is an output layer. And of course, that's the radiated sound. And then there is room acoustics and electronic post-processing if we are a CCM singer. And then there is perception and interpretation of the sound by the teacher or by the audience. But in this case, we're talking about the teacher. There are secondary outputs. And then, this is important, there is the teacher feedback. And this is where the intervention of the teacher happens. And the decision for the intervention. And it goes to an input layer to the student. And this could be emotional input, artistic intent, imaginative, sensory modeling, or it could be direct behavior modification. The crucial point here is, this is a one-way system. Information flow goes mostly in one direction. So and this is somehow shocking, but you cannot directly influence the sound. You have to go through all those layers in yourself, actually, as a teacher, and in the student. So pedagogical intervention is indirect, and it goes through all these layers. And that's a very important point to consider when we talk about potential terminological confusion. So it's possible, now I can start with my talk, actually. Possible sources for confusion in the studio. Confusion of layer. Inadequate mapping between the layers. Lack of terminology context. Overemphasizing subjective experience and ignorance. And please forgive me, and I want to be very clear. This is not judgmental, as you will hopefully see in a minute. So confusion of layers. We've seen this. Let's talk about voice registers. We all know what they are. 1964, Myrna et al. figured out or categorized this. And they found more than 100 terms for registers. Recently, I published a paper in the Journal of Singing where I propose a schematic for talking about layers of... Or how do we talk about... or how do we talk about the registers? Are we talking about propriocepticians? Like "watch it in taste" and "watch it in petto," all the very old terms. They started with this. Or are we talking about perception or are we talking about production? And if we wouldn't be clear on which layer or on which level we are talking, we might be able to avoid confusion. This is just an example. But at large, in general, I would say, consider the layer of augmentation that you're having. Then there is inadequate mapping between layers. So, a little mini-science project. Sing that tone with more brilliance. Question to you. You're all experts. Do you know what brilliance is in a tone? You probably have an opinion. Some knowledge, some... Now, please turn to your neighbor and ask yourself, do you agree upon that definition? And of course, then we have to go deeper and we have to find maybe an acoustical definition of brilliance. And we have to go further because the question is, how do we produce? What is the physiological control for that? So, there is a mapping again, from physiology to acoustics to perception. I did a fun thing. Of course, I had to go ahead and ask Chad Giedt, please define a brilliant voice. And I'm gonna spare you all of this, but the point is, everything that is highlighted in yellow here is just a referral to other subjective terms. There are a couple of introductions, instructions about voice production. And I like this one. Beyond technical qualities, so here we write. So let's find an example. I do this very briefly. We have to look for acoustic features. I might be wrong, it's just my suggestion here. Let's say, we create brighter vowels. Okay, so we have to shift the resonance with articulation. We could create a singer's formant cluster, for instance. So, okay, we have to do something with the supra-leridional space or the vertical larynx position potentially. We could have stronger overtones at large. And again, we could hunt for nonlinear interactions with modifying supra-leridional space or changing adduction or registration. Or, and probably we have to avoid breathiness, so that's again, we'll afford deduction. And we could, there could be other things. It's just a thought experiment. And we can see that some of these are controlled by the vocal tract and some are these controlled by the voice source. So if I don't have a clear idea what I mean by changing the brilliance, I cannot gear my pedagogical instruction towards a subsystem in the student's voice. It's a fishing expedition. Okay, so there must be, or there should be ideally, a causal link between production physiology and the acoustics. Let's take this further. And we've looked at six classifiers or qualities of the acoustic sound. And we asked a very simple question. Which of these is controlled by which subsystem in the voice? And the answer is, okay, formants are controlled by the vocal tract. And noise components and periodicity from the metal frequency and possibly also spectral slope are controlled by the voice source or sound source. And sound intensity is mainly controlled by the subglottal pressure. Maybe you agree, maybe you don't. We went deeper. And this is a paper that Jan Schwedt and I are working about and are very close to submitting this. If you study the literature, almost everything is influenced by everything. It's a mess. It's highly complex. And then you have this embodied system of sound control. And again, then in the singing setting, you have emotion, artistic intent. So it's a highly complex system with redundant control parts. And we have to acknowledge this in the teaching. There is two ways of approaching this, very briefly. And I prefer the first, holistic pedagogical invention. I completely bypassed the system. Sometimes it works and we're happy. But many times it doesn't work. So we have to have a targeted voice production intervention. And for this, we really have to understand this. Okay, so there is a nice, in relation to this, a nice thesis by Prudence Kova. She asked 13 voice experts to look at a catalog of sound systems, voice samples, sorry, voice samples, and ask how would they be controlled physiologically? And look at the consensus. And only, the experts could only agree about what feature in the physiology controls the sound in two of 11 descriptors. So there is no agreement. Okay. Next is lack of terminology context. You have to have, you have to have context about what you're doing. So let's, I want to invite you to a little caveman philosophy and psychology. If we talk about something, about some facts or some concept, and we agree, that's a good thing. And if our facts don't converge or our concepts are not the same and we know that we disagree, that's also a good thing. Because we're clear, that furthers and helps scientific discussion. However, there might be an issue if our facts converge, but we think we disagree. Or even worse, our facts don't converge, but we think we agree. Let's look at the last, let's look at the last one. I studied a couple, in a recent paper, I studied a couple of definitions of support. And looked at how do those definitions address different features in the voice production system. And they're all different, at least four that I looked at. So we could be talking about support, we could be happily agreeing and you and I could probably talk about something completely different. So it is actually, and this is very human. We humans have a tendency to simplify things, because otherwise we couldn't go through life. And we have a tendency to oversimplify things. That's an issue in academic discourse. And in my opinion, the context matters much more than the actual terminology. Actually, if the terms are well-defined and we have the underlying information and the concepts, I don't care what the terms are. This could be the blue register and the red register. Just as long as we know what we're talking about. And if you don't take away anything from this slide or just wanna take away one thing, that's it. That's the most important slide in this talk. Okay. Overemphasizing subjective experience. We don't know much about this. I looked a little bit, but I found two papers where they asked singing teachers, or expert singers, how they would describe certain aspects of their voice production. And that was noted, and then later, it was empirically tested. And in both these studies, about 50% of the information was wrong. Was not factual. So experts tend to have a different opinion of what they do in relation to what the actual reality is. For instance, this is a study I did with Brad Story very recently. We showed that, this is to show that people are different. So we showed that low bases, for instance, have completely different resonance strategies than high sopranos. So a low bass in unamplified singing should have a very strong voice source. And formant tuning or resonance tuning is not so important. Whereas a high soprano, the voice source strength or the spectral slope of the voice source doesn't matter so much. But resonance tuning is absolutely essential. So if a low bass teaches a high soprano based on what the low bass has experienced himself in his own teaching, this might not be so optimal. So I recommend teachers to transcend their own singing technique in order to understand what the students need. People are different. And the last thing is ignorance. This is a chart of scientific papers, peer-reviewed scientific papers in Science and Economics over the years. And you see here, this is millions of papers. And we have gone from a little bit more than 1 million to over 3 million papers in 20 years. It's so immense. We are publishing, we have to publish so much, it's growing, it's exponentially growing. So it's very hard to stay on track. But I think it's a very important part of our scientific activity. And then there is the old papers. And just because a paper is published in 1963, doesn't mean the information is bad. And we tend to overlook this. There are a couple of crucial papers which I think we should cite over and over again because they are so great. And then, we have to acknowledge, of course, we don't know everything yet. Scientific progress is very slow. Voice, as we've seen, is a highly complex physical system. We know about the basic features and causalities, but mostly in an isolated fashion. Because our scientific method is tenteris paribus. We have to keep everything stable and just investigate that one tiny thing to have a slow incremental progress in our knowledge. So the breakthrough papers are very, very rare. And, but on the other hand, voice pedagogy needs a holistic picture. Right? So there is a mismatch. And the holistic picture, I would claim, is not understood yet. So we need to go further. And the progress is slow. So I ask all the pedagogues amongst us to be patient with us scientists. Because we are all doing our best, I think. So, coming back to the title. It seems like this is a Sisyphus work to unify terminology. And this is what we sometimes like to do. But I advocate that we need to go deeper. But also, talking about the street lamps, we need to go broader. We need more street lamps. We have to go for a holistic picture. So we have to broaden the circle. And this is where this little two-headed ogre finds himself very well acquainted in this community. Thank you very much.